Okay, hey, everyone, it's four o'clock and we're gonna go ahead and get started with our college town hall. Please let me know if you would with the chat feature if if something's not coming through or if you can't see the screen. Hopefully you are looking at the the first slide of the Goop to College Town Hall. So that's not the case, please let me know as we get started. And I was thinking as I was getting ready to start talking with you all and sharing some updates and hearing from you all. Something kind of came to my mind, I'm gonna hold this up, I don't know if you can see that on your on your screen. Or if I'm in your in the corner, but I'm holding a a purple pen and it just sort of dawned on me. How something so simple has made a huge impact. First off, I love this, it's like a felt pen that I use and so. Why does that matter? Well, when I was in college, I was an English one oh one as a freshman and my English professor, who is a tremendous individual by the name of Dr. Brad Christie. He actually with great papers like we all do. And because we were doing composition and I was not honestly and admittedly not great at writing initially trying to work on that skill. He would use two colors, he would use red to sort of, you know, write all the things that needed to be corrected. But when you would write things in a way that were exactly the sort of the principles of what you would see in English, he would use purple. And it was just sort of this positive reinforcement that when I would get that purple on my paper. It encouraged me and it's interesting how all these years later. I still love to use a purple pen when I can. And I guess I just want to start by thanking you all for what you do with our students. Sometimes, you know, that old phrase that often you hear parents say, my wife and I have used this many times, you know, the days are long, but the years are short. You know, we go through some long days and you're tired and you're doing all this grading. But it really matters and something as simple as some gesture like this purple pen might impact our students in a way that they'll be impacted forever. I just wanted to tell you that that what you do is really important. And how much I value what we do and the work that we do in this college and how much I appreciate each of you. Well, let me move on now and sort of start sharing with you some of the highlights I've got for you today. The first thing I want to do is kind of go through some data. And again, please let me know if something's not able to be seen clearly, that'd be helpful to me. But I'm gonna show some enrollment data for the university as of yesterday. And then also talk about some more granular detail within our college. You may have seen this from the president or from some of the other meetings you might have attended around around campus. The red arrows there show our current enrollment as of yesterday, eleven thousand one hundred and ninety two. That is a significant number in that that is record enrollment for us. What's really interesting about it, though, if you kind of, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but you know, our actual new freshman enrollment is a little bit down. For those that may not have been following it as closely. FASPA was really a giant mess this year for institutions and for families across the country. Can't say enough about our staff on campus that particularly financial aid that worked incredible hours to create packages for students to only be down. You know, about a hundred students is quite amazing. But what really added to this number is the continuing undergrad, the increase in retention that that really moved us into some new space. I might add as well that I've used this a lot in other slides, but we are really a unicorn. And I say that in jest, but it's really true that institutions in many cases are letting people off, they're closing their doors, they're reducing programs. Even some close to us like UNC Asheville, UNC Greensboro, really good state schools have had some tremendous issues with due to enrollment. So the fact that we continue to eclipse our own enrollment is is quite amazing. I can say I didn't put this in a slide, but I did get notification from admissions that our our early numbers and applications for next year, next fall are already up another seven percent. So where a lot of institutions are really feeling the enrollment cliff. We seem to be continuing to bring students here, but we're gonna have to be diligent about that. There's a recent report by Ruffel and Noel Lovett, so there is actually gonna be two enrollment cliffs with another one happening in the in the twenty thirties. And so Coastal is gonna have to keep an ever-present mind on this and in our college, we need to look at this as well. This is the retention graph that is often shown by the president and provost with that sort of final number once they lock that in as they look at that at a key point from one semester and one year to the next. So you see again, a great trend upwards, a lot of efforts from different offices on campus, including you all and what we do in our areas that have led to to that incredible number. And again, hopefully there's more that we can do there to help our students retain them, not even beyond the first year. As we really start looking at, you know, year three and four, how can we do more to make sure that that ultimately helps them be more successful and leads to higher four and six-year graduation rates. Some some information about our college, we actually, as of yesterday, we're looking at, we have two thousand eight hundred and ninety nine undergrad and graduate students. That's up two point seven percent, two point seven six percent from last year. About a quarter of all the students at Coastal are in our college, so a giant gigantic STEM footprint here at Coastal. If you actually drill into that a bit more and look at it, and of course, the breakdown, we'll be posting these slides on our teams page and also on our faculty and staff resources page, so you can go back and look at this. I'm happy to always provide that to your chairs as well, but you can see a breakdown by major, both in the college as well as for freshmen. So our freshman numbers were up three point two percent with about a third of all the incoming students to Coastal being in our college. That was very obvious when we had our freshman convocation ceremony that many of you participated in as we did sort of that welcome gauntlet. The entire, all the students on the floor of the HTC Center were all in our college. And so it was quite amazing to see to see that. The goal, of course, is how can we allow them to see their dreams fulfilled and finished with us? And that'll be some things that we'll get a chance to work on together in the coming years. Some more data, this is just sort of showing you an important statistic of what happens with with our students from the spring of twenty four and then enrolling in the fall of twenty four. You'll notice throughout the presentation today, I've tried to pull to help connect this to specific objectives of our new college strategic plan, STEM Reach twenty thirty. In that particular objective, it mentions after looking at all this data, talking with our A A, our committee, our ad hoc committee that worked on this, we want to try to stay at eighty five percent or greater. And so you can see it's just under that at eighty four percent for this past year. Some other breakdown, you can actually see percent change in enrollment from last September to this September by major. Obviously, a giant jump was as our M C S degree, the Marine and Coastal Environmental Science degrees come online. That led to, you know, obviously a percent change when you're at three and you go to ninety four, it leads to a very big percent change. But you can see there some trends and what's going on across our majors, both at the undergrad and grad level. The, this is obviously another objective that all of these are centered under strategic pillar one, strategic goal five. As we're looking at what we do, both in terms of recruitment, what we do in terms of student success. We want to look at our five-year trends and majors and that helps us kind of see what's going on and then comparing that to nationally. So one of this particular objective mentions, how can we do more to sort of reverse the five-year trend in some areas back into the positive trajectory? You can see that we've had some some real growth, tremendous growth in engineering science, psychology. And then others have gone slightly the other direction in some cases, and so we want to look at that closely and looking forward to our newly formed here very soon focus group on student success will take a look at this in addition to the work that we'll continue to do across the college and with the departments. But this again is for twenty twenty three, does not have twenty twenty four numbers yet. If you do a breakdown by demographics, you can actually see that these numbers on this slide and the next slide only have changed a couple percentage points, like one percentage point. So this is percentage by gender as well as in-state, out-of-state for our new freshmen. You can see the statistics there and then a further breakdown that might be interesting as we again look to educate as diverse a student population as we can. If you look at all majors within the college, again, this has dropped about a percentage point in each of those two categories. Our female population as well as our out-of-state numbers. And so that's a good information for us as well. That, let me shift over and talk a bit about some of the work that's going on with areas that directly affect our departments in our college. We currently have fifteen active searches that are all in a different point, but some are already reviewing applications, others are just now posted for good reasons, in some cases departments needed to wait to work out their their search ads. But we also, so five of our seven departments are searching for new faculty, fifteen. You might feel like that's a high number, we we sort of find ourselves somewhere between that that ten to fifteen for different reasons, and I'll go through that here more in a second. We did work on a hiring guide this summer that was a direct result of a requirement through our objectives in our STEM Reach twenty thirty. That hiring guide takes it all the way from how do you post the position description and add all the way to in essence, sort of shaking their hand during the visits and bringing them here on campus. So I really want to encourage our departments, our search committees, search committee chairs, department chairs, our admins to utilize that resource, there's a wealth of information there. And part of this too helps us put our best foot forward and show consistent search practices across the college, similar messaging and helps us really the the goal, attract the best talent possible and then to close that deal and have them join us. We did work because of HR, I'll talk more about that in the coming slides, HR transition to a new system from people admin to Neo Ed. We did work hard to make decisions on personnel in the end of the last spring semester, that's the earliest it's ever been done. To my knowledge, looking back at records with decisions shared out, the goal of that was that we could get things already in the queue from people admin to see these ads go out as soon as possible and and that happened for thirteen of our fifteen, we had two in engineering that we needed to wait on to work out some detail and those are in the final steps as well of going out. Many thanks to to Melanie McKeefry in my office, sad man coordinator and all of our chairs and you all for really doing a great job getting that that out so we could be ahead of the game. We actually are the only college that has all of ours at that stage. And so I'm very thankful for that, that helps us again be on the forefront of these search of the search season. We did have a recent training and I'll talk more about that, the Neo Ed, both the bumps and bruises as well as some good things that are coming out of that sort of the smaller successes we've had and then the work before us, so we'll talk about that more in a minute. Let me talk a minute about the rationale for replacements, as I've been able to visit a number of the departments, I've talked a bit about this, I've got more, the last few departments I'll be talking with here in the next few weeks. I think I'll be with our marine science colleagues tomorrow, looking forward to that. So sometimes it's based on replacements, resignations for different reasons. I can tell you for all of those and those two categories, I've had great conversation with the faculty that made those decisions. That allowed us to, I've sort of used the word, you know, creative budgeting or cobbling together funds. You know, in some cases, could we, you know, create two positions from the one position? We've looked to do that and that's tied directly to aspects like where are there, where is there tremendous growth in majors, departments? Where are there elective classes or course requirements or core classes where we need more help to be able to support that? We're trying to stay out of overload situations, appreciate the provost, both Provost Hoddinger as well as Provost Knotts for for their support through that. We've been trying to move towards a common load across the college for tenure track faculty to support the excellent scholarship and service that we do and to think about more in that in those spaces. And we need it to do that by looking at about about the load and what we're doing there. We have some new faculty lines, some growth areas that we see coming. And so we are trying to position ourselves for that and feel good about the searches we've got this year. I can really say in two departments, we had some real challenges over the last couple of years that I've been working hard with the chairs and faculty both in psychology as well as physics and engineering to help them get to a point, I want to say too, many thanks to the chairs on college council as we talk about all of these things and it's nice to see us advocate for each other about recognizing that those are areas we need to help. Hopefully, we're very successful this year and those two departments, that'll bring us to a place where we need to be. And then we can start looking at some other areas as well. But that's been a priority as well as some growth as you'll, as we just talked about in some of the things we're seeing in marine science as well as the Marine Coastal and Environmental Science degree. We have been looking at doing some new things here at Coastal with some joint hires. The idea there, which is supportive of our strategic plan, is how can we do more across the university? Where does interdisciplinary efforts benefit our students and our faculty? We were successful in working with Spadoni College to hire Dr. Chelsea Simmons to help with our both sociology and psychology and the grad programs there, so that was a win for both both colleges. We're currently searching for an environmental science person that will be a joint position with HTC Honors College. And so they their home department would be in marine science and their research and things, but they would be connected there. We also have the cyber threat intelligence degree with Edwards. And so we are also actively searching there. And then we're also toying with an idea with something with our colleagues over in the CMC College. And so more to come on that as as we think about that in a little bit more detail. I wanted, part of, you know, when I joined you all now, this is the start of my third year. It's been amazing and as we look at what we do, I've shared that it's my desire to be as open and transparent in any area that I can be. I don't want you all to feel uninformed or not to have the information. That's very important to me, always has been important to me as a faculty member. Part of that is sharing our budget and where are we, what do we ask for and then what's actually awarded to us? You'll notice if I can back up a slide that fifteen faculty is a lot and I knew that because of all the things we talked about, replacements, resignations, what we currently had and hell, holding back even in some cases to be able to go after all of those searches, you want to be careful, I've done this long enough to know that when you work with upper administration. We want to be careful to utilize what we have, be selective of what we ask for, also knowing what other requests are going to come from other colleges. So that was a decision that that I had to make in terms of what we sent forward knowing that we could address some of this ourselves and I expect us to be able to ask for more in the in the coming years. We did ask for a laboratory manager position in physics and engineering. We also have a lot of incredible contracts with local municipalities in our EQL and WWA, we need some help there to sort of firmly establish that as well as look at other resources of funding. Our faculty and students are involved in that in different ways. Shout out to the EQL as well as they just recently went through the DHEC recertification and that's no small task. We have a DHEC certified lab, we want to make sure that we can do more in that area of water quality in this corner of the state and beyond. We also have a lot of going on in math and statistics, particularly with business majors needing that, so the revisited in September came back to us from the provost. They wanted to see where enrollment landed to see what we might be able to do this year. So I'm still hopeful, but trying to work on backup plans if we have to ask again for next year or what we need to do with those. In terms of like operating budgets, we we pull all of that together for the departments. And then I work with the chairs to figure out what can we do internally versus what do we need to ask the campus for? The ones below at the bottom of this list, you can see were things that we did not get additional funds for, the ones that are approved there, we have really the economy has made it really challenging, that coupled with use to both repair and to maintain the soon, well, I'll share in a few slides, nine marine vessels that we have. So our captains, we needed some more help both in towing our vessels as well as just overall increase in the budget to help us manage our boats. We are and will continue to ask for more employee travel, the non-employee travel is for student travel. We want you all to do all the wonderful things, both for professional development as well as to to further our scholarship. I even want us to start thinking about what can we do that may not be tied to your, maybe it's part of your active pedagogical scholarship. But like we want to be the best professors and teachers we can be, so as we start looking at travel, we want to make sure we've got the resources to do that. We had a sort of there's a long, a long story there about proidens with chemistry, but we we do need help. We needed help from the campus to maintain a very important piece of equipment called an NMR, nuclear magnetic resonance. It's expensive to operate, it's used by a variety of faculty in different disciplines. And so we needed some help there, we're thankfully, we're able to get that. And so that helped both the college and the department of chemistry to not have to figure out other ways to to make that happen, which we've been doing for the last two years, very pleased about that. Student faculty and student travel, want to give you an update on this, so we just completed our our fall call for travel. You will recognize that we added the faculty and student travel on the same deadline. This is a partnership with the departments and so that's really a key piece of this as well. We we needed to put them on the same deadline because we, it helps us to administer funds in a way that maximizes our ability to send people off to travel. You know, our only requirement is obviously asking our folks to, you know, as we're gonna all work to be good stewards with this, these funds. You know, to make sure our travel gets the maximum impact and that we're as efficient with our travel as possible. And I appreciate our faculty doing that. And so once we got all those requests in, you can see there the numbers tremendous increases from last fall, which was a record year for us too. And sort of after COVID now and all that, we're seeing travel increase. And so I'm very pleased to say we were able to support from the colleges, the requests that were made to the college these amounts and we look forward to doing another spring call for for travel in the spring semester through the summer. We did look at, and I appreciate Ms. Candy Butler, our budget managers help with this. We tried to extend travel from the fall end through February so that we could come back do our our spring call and then pick up travel from March through the summer. And so again, one thing we did notice, we have some legacy forms, particularly the student travel form. I'll be be totally honest with you all, I don't love that form, I think it's a little challenging for you all. So we're gonna look to maybe streamline that, simplify that and have a simpler form for you all to submit your applications for both faculty and student travel. The faculty one's pretty good, it's a one-pager. But the student one is is honestly kind of complicated and we can make that simpler, so we're gonna work on that this semester. I wanted to remind you about the Thank You Project, obviously, this is part of our desire to take care of each other and to celebrate each other. Please again, submit Thank You Project recipients and to to thank your colleagues and to submit that thank you note, that'd be great. I wanted to spend a second on talking about these sort of five critical areas, this is actually listed in our foundations in our in our college strategic plan. Purchasing and procurement, hiring, terms and conditions, grant support, academic and student forms. I have some bullets here, I'm gonna walk us through, but but let me just first say that any institution, including Coastal, these are all things that you always want to be looking at and trying to work to make better. I kind of give the analogy of, you know, sort of that you want to see the overall trajectory moving in the right direction, but sometimes it feels like, you know, a step forward, two steps back and then two steps forward and a step back, and so it's, we want to see this increasing to help us do what we we do best. And so I can definitely say I'm hearing a lot of good things, but I also still hear challenges and that's that's to be expected. And when we have those challenges, we need you all to to help us by reporting that to your chair, to contact me directly, to contact my staff, Candy or Melanie, we'd be happy to help with any of these issues, but let me walk you through a few. I had a recent meeting with our CFO, Alan West, and I can tell you in my twenty-one years in higher education, I've never had a CFO so open to this feedback and willing to help us figure this out. He sees the value we bring and the teaching and the research that we do. And so I'm very encouraged and again, these five items, this is not something you'll ever get done and check it off the list, you're gonna want to see these things constantly getting better. And so again, we've heard from many of you on how how this is better in a lot of ways, but we still have issues, had one we've been working through our in biology, I had a chance to to join them at a department meeting last week. Dr. Michelle Barthay had a had a situation with a state contract that was very frustrating. And so we want to minimize that frustration and 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 try to fix this, so when that happens and I appreciate her reaching out to a lot, you know, that went directly to Alan and allowing us to really figure out what we need to do differently when that when that happens, so just know that that Alan and Emily, we track, as you can see in red there, we are tracking cases on the budget side, procurement, TNC, Candy is keeping a list for our office. Melanie is keeping that list and hiring and we're constantly reaching out and sort of forensically figuring out what happens when when something does get stuck, so we don't want that to be the case. Now let me say a couple other things there because this is really important. Our admin assistants are wonderful and they're still in some cases new to our college, some just joined us this past spring. It is very much their role to help our faculty to do this purchasing. We have state rules, yes, and and Alan recognizes that, but I can promise you, he is We have state rules, yes, and Alan recognizes that, but I can promise you, he is completely interested. And how can we make these things better? We just had a recent P-card travel and reimbursement training where that can, we're talking like exponentially change the time it gets for reimbursements. That's been a longstanding problem here at Coastal. And they have a really amazing solution that they are piloting that we will hopefully have operational very soon. But don't feel like you're, the admins are there to help us to understand the state rules, to understand the state contracts, to help us dig that out. I have asked Alan to look at that, how can we be more efficient there so that we don't have to do all this legwork? But the admins are there to help us with this. That's part of their duties. They realize this and we really value their assistance. I will say there are some things happening in procurement even, some key leadership is Dean Hudson's retiring after many years. I've been asked to serve on the search committee for that replacement. Again, they recognize how active our college is in this space. And I really appreciate the opportunity to serve and share our insight. That'll bring the next leader into procurement. So again, as these things, we continue to work on this, let us know so we can help you diagnose the issue. And hopefully, we're going to continue to see these things getting better. I can say that on the hiring procurement side, TNC, we are, we have seen a lot of positive things. Many people are seeing that better. But sometimes it feels like it might be slipping back. We need to bring that back and make sure we're continuing to move that forward. I will say very, very transparently, I've said this to HR and to the provost and president. The NeoEd implementation has had, I think, to put it mildly, has been a very bumpy start. We have had some successes. Our faculty searches were processed in a timely fashion. That was like record setting compared to the campus. But we've had problems with student hires. We've had, what is unacceptable is people not being able to be paid. And so we've shared this really ad nauseam in terms of how can we do this? Now, our person in HR, Melissa, has been tremendously receptive and works with, for our college, Melanie. They talk very frequently. Other folks there have been really helpful as well. But they realize there's been some challenges with this new system. And so I just continue to ask for patience. Let us know the issue. Let us share that. And let's let HR and the provost office help us work that out for the benefit of us moving forward. Couple of exciting things I wanted to mention about, we had many thanks to Dr. Rich Vizo, Dr. Will Jones and others. This has been a growing initiative with Clemson. They are actually wanting to possibly sign an MOU with us on some ways that help our students go there and take their grad programs and get some credit with us. And then find, again, extra education with them. That was an excellent event that grew quite a bit this past year. I want to remind you to join us tomorrow. We're going to have in the Douglas Hall lobby. We're going to sort of officially welcome our new faculty and staff. I know we did that at the kickoff. This will be a wonderful evening of hors d'oeuvres and some adult beverages and some teal punch. I mean, who doesn't like teal punch, right? You know, psychedelic neon teal punch. So we'll enjoy that together. But drop in, it's going to be at five o'clock. It will go till about 6:30 or so. And feel free to stop by and say hello to your new colleagues. Very pleased that we get to go back to the AAC and New Transforming STEM Conference. This helps us get out of Conway, honestly, and join in that national conversation in STEM. Got a tremendous team that's going. Many thanks to having the departments represented there. Look forward in future years possibly for perhaps our engaged teaching and learning ad hoc focus group to get them involved in the opportunity to visit. One thing we're going to work as a group this year is that when we get back, it's always a challenge grabbing all this knowledge and disseminating that out. We're going to come up with some kind of brown bag or some opportunity where beyond just sort of pulling things into our team's page, we can share that one or two really good ideas that might impact you in the classroom, your department or our college. We are welcoming back the Success Team. This is an amazing nonprofit leadership organization on the western part of South Carolina. They focus on helping students achieve their dreams and they really help with student population groups that historically have been disadvantaged. And so we have a tremendous group of students. There'll probably be more than 50, maybe closer to 60. Last year, we had about 30 students of color coming to visit with us, many of which are first generation. And we're excited about their visit October 7th. And that again, helps us in areas. We want to, again, attract the most qualified, diverse student population, helping with that public mission of what we do, particularly in STEM. Also, join us for Fall Fest. I joke with all, I've been having the pleasure of talking to all of our freshmen through our 110 classes. I tell them we're going to load them up with sugar, a bunch of cookies and pies and hot chocolate and apple cider, much like our very successful science scoop in the spring. Join us on the 22nd as we get a chance to just hang out together, hang out with our students. It'll be in the Science Quad and we look forward to doing that as well. Wanted to mention some activity that's going on with equipment instrumentation and vessel needs moving forward. Our tech committee members very much appreciate their work. They'll be working on behalf of the departments on coming up with our list. As I've been telling our committee members and telling the departments, you know, when I get that list from the tech committee, whatever's first on that list is that priority item that we need for really having, you know, cutting edge technology for our teaching and learning. And so look forward to looking at that list that comes from that committee. We also need ongoing list. What are the things that we need within our departments? That strategic goal and objective under our plan. We're looking to invest 50% investment, increase in investment in our equipment. We want state of the art equipment and instrumentation and vessels. And so that's a three and a half million dollar investment over the next six years. So I look forward to working with you all to identify those items and utilizing all of our sources of funds to get the items we need to do the work that we do best. I have asked the chairs to help us compile the departmental lists by October 11th. We also have certain equipment that spans departments. And we want to start thinking more that way as we look at interdisciplinary uses of equipment and start thinking about the structures that we have for our centers. How can we pull in equipment that can be utilized across departments, much like our NMR? And so excited to see the list that we work on this coming year. Very excited to share with you, we have a new vessel in our fleet. These are amazing pictures. Many, many, many thanks to our boat captains, particularly Chris Dobson and Jamie Phillips, Edwin as well, Rich Vizo's assistants as he helps my office with this. This vessel was donated to us from the North Myrtle Beach Police Department. I can promise you that when you see it, it is spectacular. It is our second largest in our vessel fleet now. We had to invest about $130,000. The body itself was great. It's actually the same manufacturer as our Explorer. But it needed every bolt, every wire, everything needed to be replaced. And so, but that investment, which we were able to handle internally, which is also important to the campus, we were able to handle that ourselves. The value of that vessel now is in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. This will be used for teaching and research. Its maneuverability, its worthiness for open water out in the ocean is quite amazing, quite impressive. And so I look forward to you seeing this. There's going to be a christening dedication event in later October where we've invited the North Myrtle Beach Police out and we look forward to celebrating this with them. Our president, after sending some names and sending that to President's Council, has named the boat The Discovery. So we're, Explorer is our largest vessel. The Discovery is what it will be. So the title you see there was a draft mock-up image of the wrap, just to let us see where the name would be. But that will say Coastal Discovery and they are actually putting the wraps on it this week, I believe. It's got a couple of final checks with the Coast Guard, but we expect that to be operational fairly soon. I wanted to just mention, I've kind of mentioned this a couple of times already, but very much appreciate all the faculty that have reached out to serve on one of these sort of strength areas for our college. These came out of our strategic plan. So pulling that list of folks in a couple of cases. We want to make sure the committees are full, but not so big that we can't, you know, get really good work done. And there's just in a couple of places, maybe a chance for one or two more people to serve. But amazing response to that. Really appreciate those that have decided to help. And there'll be more to come on that very soon. The goal of these groups to focus in on, again, what we do best, teaching and learning, student success, RPG related issues, recruitment, progression, graduation, research, and then honors awards and scholarship, how we honor our students, how we honor each other. And what are the best practices in our college already and at peer and aspirants? What are the actions that these groups want our college to consider and implement? And then one thing that'll be exciting too, I'd love to have the leadership of these groups help share the work that they discover at the end of the year at our college wrap-up meeting. So we can see what are the good ideas coming forth and what are we able to move forward with? So excited to work with those groups. My role will be really just ex officios, my associate deans, just so that we can listen and hear and let our faculty and in case of the honors, awards and scholarship faculty and staff really help us come up with those ideas beyond what we're doing even, or even to rethink some of the things we're doing to move us forward. Wanted to bring your attention to Progression, just a huge thanks to Wendy Lee and her help with this. This will be something that we're very much, we've had to pull articles from a variety of ways, honestly. Moving forward, I look forward to that HOS committee, that honors, awards and scholarship group helping us identify some of the articles and things and helping us work on that. But Progression is an amazing historical document for our college. We just got the print versions. Feel free to stop by. We're happy to give you a copy. And then also there will be a flip book where you can go online and see this on our website. We also send rack cards. So one of the things we're working to do is to get our name out more prominently. So we identified last year about 100 peer and aspirant institutions all over the greater southeast, up into the northeast. And we send them a rack card with a QR code that allows them to go in and take a look at all the good stuff that's happening. That's one of the things you do to help with things like US News and World Report, to let them see what's going on, what is the momentum of our college. And so again, many thanks to Wendy for her help with this tremendous, you know, I love looking, think about this as putting the bow on last year. So instead of us doing this every semester, we do it once a year. And we talk about all the good things you all did the previous year. You can see Brad Jarrett there, Marine Science, as they were doing some side scanning sonar up at Bucksport and Conway, all the way to Cage Mitchell, one of our star students now, who is out at Stanford, actually, working on his PhD. So and then you get to celebrate all the wonderful things, the promotion and tenure decisions of all of our people and all the other good things that are happening. So take a look at Progression as it comes out. Very exciting. Also wanted to just show you some of the final images coming out of our strategic plan. We are expecting to get the final edit from MarCom. This will go to print. This was a tremendous work done by our ad hoc committee and then it just turned out so well in sort of letting the world see what we're going to do together for the rest of this decade. This will be also a flip book. This will be on our website. When we looked at our peer and aspirants, really interestingly to find only one other institution in the entire Sun Belt even had a college plan, anything done like this, even close to it, and that was at Appalachian State. And so this puts us in great company. I actually have a chance to meet with the deans of the other colleges of science across the Sun Belt. And we're definitely leading the way. We're already leading the way in a lot of things we do, particularly in the area of scholarship. And now we see this plan that'll really help. But more importantly for us, this is that living document we've been talking about. So we can talk about what we're doing, get feedback from you all each year and see these, the work, this important work that you all helped guide through your survey responses and other open forum allowed us to put this document together. I just can't thank the faculty and staff that helped with this. They're just a tremendous group of people. And I'm really proud to see this come together. I was sharing with a alum today, interestingly enough, a 2001 Marine Science alum that's in a governmental office and right outside of DC, going to be coming and helping our students talk about career plans. And this just happened today. He was talking about his great experiences and back in 2001, we were much, much smaller. And to sort of share with him some of the things that you all, how we've clearly identified who we are, where we want to go. Looking forward to sharing this broadly. Look forward to sharing this with our Board of Trustees and our president. They've seen and heard a little bit about this. Our plan is to give them a copy of this at their next meeting at the middle of October. That's also exciting. Not that we're in any kind of competition with our other colleges, but we're really out front with this because at the end, that far right image there that you see, each of our goals and objectives have been mapped to the strategic initiatives of the CCU reach, the university plan. That's really important. That's our governing plan for the university. And then how does our work further the university? And all of that is mapped there. And so we're really excited as we've started this important work for our college. The last thing I want to spend time on is something that really is very important to me. And I wanted to give you the latest information as I've had a chance to talk with a number of you about some of these aspects. I had the chance to be in Faculty Senate recently and some of this was brought up due to some recent events on campus. So let me back, start there. Recent events on campus, this is like a safety update, if you will. There was an event that took place in Smith Building that honestly, there is some misinformation that went out about that. There was really, I would even say a breakdown in communication that I've had the chance to talk with both Presidents Council about that. I'm going to give you an update on in just a moment. But those types of things, thankfully, when they happen, and again, in this case, God forbid, it was something even more or worse for our folks, you learn from that. And so, you know, we recently had protesters on campus over in Kearns. We had the closure recently due to tropical storm. Just yesterday, we had an odor in Swain Hall that led to a CCU alert going out with the subsequent all clear. I wanted to give you all some really important information that I think will help our college and then tell you about where some of these things are, both at the provost level as well as the university level. So the first thing is, on behalf of you all and gathering all this feedback from chairs, from faculty, staff, advocating for what you see there in those bullet lists. You know, when we talk about these events and again, hopefully, you know, future events that happen won't be even more stressful or dire or really impacting our folks. But you know, yes, campus emails, web announcements, that's important. A notification system. Currently, we have CCU Alert, which I'll talk about that as I got just some recent information as recent as yesterday. Announcement systems, you know, sort of like the old thing in high school, PA systems where you can make announcements within buildings or across campus to find out that we do have announcement systems in our buildings, not all buildings. And so they're looking at filling those gaps. And again, that would be for obviously campus emergencies. You know, what about when you're teaching and you don't have your phone next to you or you're not able to check an email? What can happen with the computer to create some kind of auto banner that could, you know, send out some sort of message? What is posted in our classrooms and buildings? And then again, a very important piece that I believe upper administrations hears from us is this after action event reporting. One thing that I would really like to see, when I joined you all in the summer of '22, had went through some HR trainings like all new hires do. But I understand for those that have been around longer that there were certain trainings that were mandatory and done in person and then things kind of changed with COVID a bit. But I will tell you that I think it's really important that we do strongly consider some trainings on a very frequent yearly basis around natural disasters, fire, active shooter. And so I've been asking the campus and asking that we really look at that in addition to, I know the great work, our leadership and Faculty Senate have been asking for some things along this, all of these aspects as well. So I just wanted you to know that I think that, I just met with the provost and chief of staff yesterday about this very issue. And so I'm looking forward to and hearing from them, things that they're going to be working on. We did, we did get a consultant to come in last summer to look at public safety. And so they are currently reviewing that, all the good things that public safety does, and there's many of those things. But also things that we can do to further make sure our campus is safe. Let me talk a little bit about CCU Alert because I think sometimes there's some misinformation about this. What's in quotes there is actually on the CCU Alert page. And it says that it is a notification system that enables CCU to notify subscribers of an impending or actual situation. of an impending or actual situation in which actions are required for the health and safety of the campus community instantly and simultaneously to all registered mobile phones. So let me first say that CCU has alert has some strengths, but it's also got some things uh that we might want to consider uh differently. And that's why um I had just received information that there are other systems. Uh, public safety has shared that with upper administration that they are looking at as a possible replacement for CCU alerts. We've got to give them some time as they uh figure out uh some of the shortcomings of our current system, what can be uh folded in with some of these new systems. But that, that I bolded the word notified subscribers because sometimes uh you've heard, I know senate talked about opt in or opt out in terms of uh what CCU alert um can do. It is an opt in system. That's how that system is, is set up, meaning that uh you all, as a faculty or staff member, have to opt in by providing it with your, your cellphone. Uh, that's not unlike other institutions that have opt in systems. Your cellphone number, although the university has it, your choice of utilizing it for some system is, is up to you. And so our current system is an opt in with the exception, and I did find this out and why I wanted to share this with you all, with university employee emails. So if, let's say something happens, uh it actually happened yesterday with the odor in Swain. Um, that should trigger an automatic email to all CCU employees and students when CCU alert sends that out. That's what I've been, I've been told and I've asked them to verify that yet again, and that's what they, they shared with me. But here's sort of the cheat code and why I underlined it is very important. Um, you will not get that to your cellphone unless you've opted in. So one way to know that you are opted in to CCU alert, because if you're not opted in, let me be very clear. If you're not opting in, if you have not subscribed, the only thing you're going to get through CCU alert will be that email that will go out to all CCU employees, faculty, staff and students. To get that text message uh the way you know it, if you're enrolled in the system, you're going to get two separate emails and, and you'll get the text message to your phone. So I want to encourage you, you can see there in blue, that is the link to go to uh CCU alert to enroll. Uh, one of the questions we found out, and I really appreciate leadership and faculty and faculty senate asking this question. Um, it, you are set for a cer- certain length of time, you're subscribed into that. We asked the upper administration to set this up to where when you're about to roll out, because it's set for so many years, that you would get a reminder email. And so I've, I've been told that that is happening now, that there's a thirty day reminder email for anyone that's about to roll out of the system to re-enroll. So I really want to encourage you uh that right now, until we get something different, please utilize CCU alert so that you can get those text messages in real time. The last thing I want to do, and then uh we'll be finished for the day, unless you all have any questions for me, is I wanted to give some recent information on that event that took place last spring. I, I want to say before I switch to the next slide that um um, they definitely shared, upper administration shared that it took way too long to get this information back. And so they're working to speed that up. We all agree that we can do more on the after event reporting. And so I appreciate um them hearing us, hearing me and then getting this, this information. Uh, let me say about this, this was an event that took place last spring. It happened in the Smith Building. And so I can't give all details because it involves um a student, there's confidentiality concerns there. But I did receive a summary yesterday. I do expect uh that the administration is going to try to provide some kind of report. This has been discussed with public safety. But let me, let me give you some things that I do think kind of led out to some, some maybe misinformation or, or you know, false narratives about what happened or what didn't happen. Um, overall, this is what was shared with me, that public safety, when they evaluated all the factors for that event uh last spring, they, it was led to the conclusion that this was not a threat to the campus or building once they considered all the factors. It was a mental health related incident. The student that was involved did receive treatment by first responders and rest transported for care. Um, prior to the event that actually triggered all of the activities I'm about to share, a phone call was received by public safety that was very broad. It just said, people in Smith need help. And so it was ambiguous. Um, the public safety was not sure exactly based on that phone call. That was all that was shared. So they responded in a way to uh make sure that everyone was indeed going to be safe. Uh, that, that response led to them wearing certain gear uh so that they could actually search the building and be prepared for whatever might come. They did actually lock the external doors uh to prevent new people from coming in. That is standard protocol so that they can check and clear areas. Um, there was a rumor that H G T C, our neighbors across the way, that they did go, they did in fact go into a lockdown. That was kind of interesting because at the time, none of that was shared with public safety is what public safety has shared with us. They were not communicating with CCU public safety is what, is what I was told yesterday. Um, they didn't have enough information to go on, but that was still their decision. Uh, in this case, the student was located by the officers um and taken to first responders who uh was able to treat, treat the student and transport to a nearby medical facility. Uh, but this has led to a, an in-depth conversation between upper administration and public safety on that communication piece, on how that could be seen lots of different ways. And how do faculty that might be teaching in that moment, do you shelter in place? Do you release them to the hallways? And so that's led to not only in this case, you know, they will, my understanding is there's going to be a, another act, after action report. But you know, how do we look at what we do? Uh, again, going back to a couple of slides and looking at those sub bullets to make sure our people have the information they need um in the moment and making sure that our folks stay safe. I do believe that the president, when he said that, you know, that is our number one priority. And I just thought I'd spend some time here today, giving you updates on what I know uh and what we're continuing to ask for, uh so we can make sure our, our people, uh you all, our faculty and staff, as well as our students stay safe. So with that, um, I'm going to just again, thank you for all that you do. I've got the chat box open. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I'd be happy to stay on if you, anyone has a question for me. Uh, feel free to type that in the chat or you can um actually just unmute yourself and and ask me a question. Happy to do that. Um, and so let me give you time to do that now. While you're thinking about that, if you have any information or anything you would like me to ask, I'm happy to do that. Um, but I do want to again, um, just encourage you, I'm happy to um, you know, I'd love to meet with you at any point. Um, I, I love coming to your department meetings. If I can come there and speak to the group, I'm happy to do that. Uh, and so if I can help you in any way, please know, let me know, come by. And I look forward to uh to working with you. Again, thank you guys so much for all that you do. Um, it does not go unnoticed by the campus and definitely not by me. Uh, I appreciate all that you do each and every day. Hang in there and if there's anything I could do to help you, just let me know. Hope I see a hand up, Teresa, yes, please.
Um, in case you talk more about the alerts with
Yeah.
that system, um, I didn't get the alert until after it was all cleared that there was an alert. Like mine, yeah, the one in Swain, I'm sorry, yesterday, like I didn't get it till after the fact. I don't know if there was a delay with, you know, cell providers. Um, but it was like the fire department wasn't even out there anymore when I got the alert.
So you got, that's, thank you. So that's good. And that, that kind of feedback is helpful because I share that directly up to public safety and to upper administration. So if I'm hearing you right, Teresa, you got the, it sounds like you're enrolled and you got the text after the fact of the alert being all clear, but you did not receive the initial alert that there was the odor in Swain. Is that, is that correct?
Um, no, I got the initial alert after the fact.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, like I wouldn't have known if others in the office suite didn't get the alert, but mine didn't come through until after.
Okay, yep, thank you. That's obviously not what that's supposed to do. I don't know if others found that to be the case, but um I can say that for mine, I, it seemed to, I seemed to get it as, as it was happening, both the initial and the all clear. But again, I know they're looking at that system very closely and I'll share that information.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, well, um, I'll stay on a few more minutes. If you, if you feel like you need to, to log off now, I totally understand that. I thank you for joining today. Uh, your time is precious, I really appreciate it. And if I can help you to let, just let me know and I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.